Should we, Dr. Do an indication?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Alright. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and discuss the city that we all love and the citizens. And we pray that you keep your guiding hand upon us and guide us in your wisdom as we discuss what is best for Edina and its people.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Stacy will be speaking your night tonight, so she'll be coming in late unless we finish before kitchen, so that's where she is. Uh, approval to pay monthly bills, has everybody had a chance to look at the printout of the bills? Take a minute to do that if you need to, and we'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
One second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to pay the bills, all in favor? Alrighty. Okay, Kurt, I'm gonna go ahead and Kurt's here, uh, as our emergency management director, I asked him if he'd come just fill us in kind of an annual report, just a couple of words about what he does and if there's anything we can do to support him better in his role.
Longing man. Most recently, Red Cross has contacted me, uh, they're looking for anyone that would be willing to serve, I guess, is like the community go-to for when there's a, say, a house fire, because John Duggan is in Kirksville and he's wanting somebody in the local community that if there's a house fire or some type of disaster where people are displaced.
Okay.
Um, if anybody knows anybody, when I talked to him, I said I didn't have anybody on top, on the top of my head that I could think of, but...
So, on that, if there's somebody watching that would be interested, what do they do, contact you?
Uh, yeah, or get ahold of City Hall here, Margaret can get ahold of me, that might be easiest.
Yeah.
And then we'll go from there.
Cool.
And, uh, the, the state Region B coordinator, he keeps me updated with everything the state's doing, multiple emails on a weekly basis, so, uh...
Okay, let's know that we're here, if there's anything we can do, or, you know, anything comes up, let us know.
Alright.
Thank you.
That's why we have our tags, right?
Yeah.
In case of a, we can, we can be called in and we'll tag up and we'll help you.
Yep. Or you can put your name and after that Red Cross thing, God.
I think I'll pass.
I think she just volunteered, absolutely.
I was counting, that's what she was doing.
Alright.
Alright, any questions for Kurt before he goes?
Kurt, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, I, we appreciate you doing this and being willing to fill that role.
Alright.
Alright, have a good night.
You all do the same.
Could we send Brian in? I skipped the minutes. Okay, you guys have the copy of the minutes and reports from last, uh... Yeah, uh, yeah, all the special meetings that we had and the treasurer's report, collector's report, any questions, uh, comments on any of those? What I get from that question is we go, I messed it up by item number two. Alright, as soon as you guys can look over the, the minutes and reports, uh, if you don't have any questions, we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion later. Approve the months.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes and reports as presented, all in favor? Alright, ask if you can, please. I also want to real quickly add to the public watching, your perspective is flattened, so it might look like we're clumped really close together, but we did space our chairs out in addition to wearing masks, so we are trying to get closer so that we're not spread all around City Hall to make it a little more conducive to discussion and getting, getting deeper into topics as we need to, so, and my glasses will keep fogging up, so. Alright, uh, Chase is not here yet, he was gonna be a little late, so we're gonna skip over that one until he gets here. Do you have anything on your report, anything to comment on?
No.
Any other comments on anything? Alright. Yeah, I think so.
I'll do it then.
Thanks, Echo. And he has Ryan's reports in your package, so if you have any questions for him. No, I know. That was cheap, that was a low blow.
Multiple items, have you recovered your multiple? Do you have?
No, none of those, got myself out.
I heard that.
Didn't get anything back out of the garage.
I thought the truck was probably loaded with the, with the items.
They loaded them, done with them, by the way, he thought I was cleaning my garage out.
He stopped and helped.
I didn't see nobody around, that's what I saw, she's on her way.
Yeah, that's what she told me.
I'll pay more attention next time.
Alright, any questions for, for Ryan? Ryan, do you have anything for us?
No, she, I thought you guys had something for me.
No, we just, we're...
We've got time, we wanna leave you out.
Do you have any, have any questions? What's that?
We just wanna do the participate if we want to do it.
I do, can I have one of those lists?
Um, I made you one.
So, one of the reports, here, she's got me.
Did you ever talk to them about putting that stop sign in?
They know about it, they just, they stop by the house, I think there'd be a three-way right there.
Which intersection are you talking about?
Uh, it's come back, so...
South, or right there at the ambulance office and?
No, up, up there past my house, right there between me and Wickers and...
Clay and East Grace, that would've been.
People just fly down through there. Then we got neighbors that's got kids on bikes and it's gonna seem nothing happens, so.
I think the police department is going to, uh...
Monitor?
Monitor the area.
I missed the truck being stolen.
Is one stop sign at every house, they just stop, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably stop there.
That's what I think, he knows about it, so if anybody sees him, they'll talk to him, need to try to get them put in, they're just moving something else.
Okay, when Chase is here, you can go ahead and send him in.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Echo, did you say you had a question for Ryan?
No.
Oh, I made up hearing that, never mind.
I mean, if he wanted me to come up with some on the fly.
I think he's, I think he's good. Alright, um, let's jump to the building permit then.
North of Don Coots, just closest.
Yep.
And of course, it's really not something that they really need a building permit for, I mean, they wanted to fill one out in a fly, but they're only replacing, you know, replacing the garage.
They tore off the existing garage and are replacing it, so the footprint is still...
Yeah, but the home is still the same, they just tore off that corner that had been a, a porch or a button or whatever, and then they're replacing it.
I thought they was putting on a garage too?
No, the garage is, is where there was an old garage.
Yeah, so they are, but...
I thought I seen a foreign concrete floor, I don't see...
Yeah, it's looking great.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Okay, David?
Rick second.
And Rick?
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the building permit, all in favor? Alright, so, there he is. Does any, David, did you get my message about asking Mike Shrag about his opinion on the back, what it would cost to tear that off?
Yeah, he hasn't got anything to do with it.
Okay, does anybody else have any?
Are you talking about tearing the porch, just where the, uh...
Just that last bit, like from the man walk-through door back?
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Try to get with him this week and find something out for that.
Okay, yeah, just a ballpark on his side, that'd be, um... Has anybody else had any conversations with anybody about Chase Dixon is getting us, uh, numbers for the brickwork on the sides of this existing structure, if we did that route, we have the roof. So, we're just kinda waiting on a few numbers at this point, unless anybody has anything to add, review.
It's hard to find anybody that took points, brick, can do brickwork.
Okay, um, then we're just gonna be leaving this on until we can get somewhere on the agendas, I mean, it'll be very, very...
On the comments, uh, I think there, uh, over by Randy Schultz, there's a few chuppas that need to be filled in, far around the corner, the hallway to which I was also, there's quite a few chuppas that need to be filled in, if we're getting extra...
Okay.
Matting to put in there, yeah, I'm sure that's probably not the only question, gentlemen.
No, we've got, we've got a few earmarks, so...
Cotty Street, Martin's, there's that intersection that we've worked out.
Oh.
And over there, the grand cars, need quite a bit of work down there.
Wonder if the courthouse too, I believe, on that side.
And, uh, down there at the Old City Barn, it needs, the blacktop needs to be feathered off, there's gotta turn some up the hill.
Yeah.
You got that much to drop off.
Yeah, and they are, you know, working on that.
We're gonna get some in real bad and get on that, I think we gotta learn blacktop less, 'cause I don't, I think if they got down there, probably enough.
Yeah, and we were looking into getting more, um, Joe ended up being out today, had poison ivy, uh, on his face and, uh, he's getting into the doctor, he's getting pretty, yeah, it sounded like pretty terrible, but, um... So I was gonna get an update on that today, but he obviously had other things, uh, going on today, so...
Have we got any bids on the barn down there, bringing it, putting the roof on it, I wonder anybody's...
He, I asked him last week about that, and he was gonna circle back to, the guy was gonna get him numbers and had yet, so he was gonna circle back to that.
The Old County Barn?
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think they're gonna take ten off, put new ten on, and chief, as I said, they're gonna give some numbers, um...
Okay. Well, anything else on? Uh, let's talk about campsites.
One thing to look at, in my opinion, if we're considering this deal with 4H, why not give them from the Co. South? They take care of the mowing and that, and then if it comes about, they wanna use the, the clubhouse for their fort hall and all that, there would be, there would be no... My proposed spot, for that, I've been out there and looked, is the next ridge over from, be across from Stephanie Kennedy, or not, but not Stephanie, but, uh, Melon's.
For?
For camp, the campsite.
Okay, where?
I don't think the 4H should be able to come up with the money to do anything out there, but did you guys see the show up here, how many people is up there? They showed like four, four things, I mean, it was, I mean, I don't see how they got anybody in 4H to, to maybe do anything. I don't know whether they're gonna come up with money to even put a building and stuff up, I just don't think they can take care of it.
Crystal's out there, she, do you want me to grab her?
Well, and we're, right now, we're just talking about the campsites, which were the city side, like, when Chase and Crystal are here, we can talk about the 4H part.
This is our, that's got nothing to do with the 4H.
Yeah, this is...
Well, I'm just saying, if we're gonna turn that all over to the 4H, you're gonna have to look 4H, figure what they're gonna do first, too.
Not for, I mean, if we're just, they, they just want from the driveway south, is all that's up for debate on that, and then there was spec, it, it was undecided whether they were interested in the clubhouse, so we'll see when they get here, if they are, but I think independently, and this is just, I mean, we can discuss a little bit and then just have a motion one way or another, and discuss that particular subject, but I think COVID has increased the need for outdoor recreation, that we might be shortchanging our citizens and not providing enough. Uh, there's more of a need than there was before, but it also has made it harder for things like, the 4H shows obviously were severely impacted this year, and who knows in the future what it'll look like, but I think we're talking about two different, two different subjects right now, that have, there were two different subjects before, but now, post-COVID in this world, it's that they've delineated even more.
My thought on that is, I think, uh, us right here, it shouldn't be up to us whether we're gonna sign a, uh, do a campground, I know we're not gonna talk about the, yet, but I think it needs to come up to the citizens of Edina, the vote, whether they want to spend their tax dollars out there on a campground. To me, it's not up to us, I don't know what anybody else feels like, but I...
Hey, I'll, I'll speak, I'm not trying to interrupt, the citizens of this town voted us to put us here to make that decision, David, that's the way I look at it, I mean, I'm not saying it should all, everything falls on us, but...
But still, it's still taxpayers' money, so they ought to be, they ought to have a shot at voting for it, yes or no?
I know that when we had the trash decision, my people had no trouble coming to me and giving me their opinion, so if we say this is what we're thinking about, and really put it to the camera, I think they'll come to us and tell us what they want, I don't think we have to put it on the ballot, they will tell us, this is my opinion.
It's just my opinion, what's your opinion?
I think the people being voted on, I just, I mean, we're running the city's checkbook, and I run the city's checkbook like I run my own, and if it costs, it's gonna cost forty, fifty thousand out there, and no return on it hardly, I just, I don't see it. And I don't wanna spend the city's money like that, and I think if the city of Edina, people vote that, it, I won't feel that bad if they spend the money, it's what they want.
Right.
But I just don't wanna pay, it'll cost us to put it on the ballot, is it worth the cost to put it on the ballot?
So what about, and this might not be an option, I'm just spitballing, what about doing some sort of, um, like a town hall meeting where we have, let people talk, why they think it'd be a good idea, why they think it'd be a bad idea?
I think the ballot cost us, you know, we'd have to pay to put it on the ballot.
But this would be, uh, a chance for people to voice opinions either way, let us hear it, um, and also, obviously, be inviting them to talk to us about their opinion one way or another and why.
The only thing is, it's a little difficult right now to have a...
That's true, yeah, I really... Echo?
I don't know that this isn't an ideal time to have a public meeting, I think you might wanna investigate the possibility of maybe some sort of online or, but not besides online, there's a number of people who live here who are not online.
That's what I don't want to leave out.
We could do some kind of a campaign in the paper that lists all the ways that the community can talk back to the council, and then you guys can just let me know how you wanna go about that, like I could put in, people who don't use the internet could maybe call and tell Margaret what they think, or people who wanna write it down could send an email, or people, I just, um, I just personally, who, you know, working in the land of public information, I think to call people together for a public-type meeting might not yield the results that you want, just because you're not gonna get the turnout that would happen in a normal, uh, period, but if you opened up the lines of communication, send a letter, send an email, give a phone call, you know, that type of thing, and you really could kind of encompass everyone who wants to have their say.
I think that would be beneficial too, not just on this subject, but just, I feel better not yelling over the mask, um... Just to make us more accessible, 'cause I think sometimes people hesitate to give their opinions, 'cause either they don't know how, what the best way to reach out, or, um, they don't wanna bother us, or whatever the reasons that they keep from doing it, having, using this as kind of a getting pick to figure out how to become more transparent to the citizens and, and more accessible in the correct ways.
I mean, ideally, you know, you guys could set a timeline, just like you do when you advertise something in the paper, give it however many weeks you feel like it would be appropriate, or even do all the way up until the next meeting, and then maybe all of you could sit and go through all of those. Maybe that could be the public portion of it, where you guys sit down and go through what people have to say, and we could do that, kind of, we could live stream that, so... Just an idea.
What's your thoughts, Diana, on those things?
Kinda like what you said, what Rick said, uh... What would it cost to put camp, camping sites in out there, and...
Cause it's only asset that the city really has, and we're just doing nothing, literally doing nothing.
But we've got money we can spend elsewhere to fix the town up, we got an old water plant down there, needs something done to, we got building and stuff that we need to take care of, I just don't wanna take the money and out of town to something to be nice for everybody, to be nice, but we got things here in town we need to take care of first.
Peggy, since we're delving into financial situation talk, do you have anything you want to, what are your thoughts as our treasurer? Sorry to put you on the spot, I didn't mean to do that.
Well, there's a balance there, and when you choose one thing, then, you know, you're, you may lose an opportunity somewhere else, so it is a matter of choices and decisions that you're making. Um, I like the idea of a public survey, you know, get the opinion of, of the people in the community and s- see what some of their priorities are, we may do other things just than one issue. Because we've got several things that we've got going around right now that are being discussed, so it could be informational, but then also let them make some choices as to what they feel like is important.
I think that's...
So that we can have a, a good communication.
And that too, is there, 'cause like what you were saying, all the things that we need to spend money on, I mean, it's no secret, I think the campgrounds would be a great idea. But we also have a lot of large expenses that we're looking at either now or in the near future, and so a way that maybe we can get feedback, not just on whether people think a campground or not is a good idea, but where you can think it's a good idea, but maybe it's not a high priority, or, or vice versa, that how, how citizens prioritize where, what we need to be doing first. What are some ideas on that, we've got lots of thi, you know, we have deferred maintenance, we have things falling down that we need to take care of, how can we get, what's our best method of getting concise feedback on where they want to see the money spent first, and in, and in what order, not dispersed, but what are the priorities for the people that we're responsible for voting on behalf of?
Why not send everyone a questionnaire? In the mail?
Send that with the mail.
Send it out with the water bill.
Gotta be going out, you've had a questionnaire here.
If you wanna send the water bill, then move.
Get very loose response, but...
Well, maybe if we tried a, well, we set it up with an online, where they, uh, um, send it out with the water bill, but have an online option where they can go to do it, I, I know, at least I would be much more likely, if I got something in the mail, a questionnaire to get online and answer it, than I would be to fill it out and mail it back in, but then we're not disenfranchising the people who don't have that option, and...
You gotta mail your water bill anyway.
Yeah, so we're already mailing a water bill.
We're bringing in a thing.
And...
So we can drop it off.
Uh-huh, yeah, it doesn't have to be mailed back, they can drop it off, Echo, would you be willing to help us?
Yes.
Advertise to get, you know, how, how to get it back and reminders to, to do so?
That's interesting, I'm excited to see how that turns out.
So if we would need, if that's the route we wanna go, we would need a motion and vote on that, correct?
Uh, yeah, or, or...
Before we, before we discuss more about, about it, I think we...
Yeah, and you'd just be getting some opinions.
Would like a motion to do it?
Cause it's not like you're actually doing anything except just getting some opinions.
Right, right, okay.
So, Rick?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded that we create a survey to get opinions and prioritization from the community, all in favor, or any questions, more discussion on it before we vote?
Then how are you gonna figure out who wants what, you just gonna tally it up, or how, what are you gonna put on it, have three things?
Okay, say, have thumbs, like number, this is my number one priority, this is...
Yeah, I think it'll have to be, um...
Don't just say, this is what I care about, make thumb head numbers.
Right, no, I think it'll have to be, to get accurate data, we're gonna have to have it, everybody will have to have the same choices.
Yes.
That's in their ranking.
Because you know, everybody won't have the same, same idea.
Right, but if we give this, you know, if, if we, um...
If they wanna put a walk trail in, or if they wanna have a campground then, or if they want 4H, or if they wanna sell the whole thing, or whatever, you just have options on it.
Well, and to begin with, we can just put development, like recreational development at the lake, we don't have to get into what exactly, if it comes out that that's a high priority, then we can get into
Details.
Figuring out, especially if we have a good survey system set up, that, that, if it, if it's a success, then it would be easy to just replicate that and figure out, okay... and figure out, okay, this is something important to the community, what, what do you want, would be the next step. But I think now if it's, um, we just add develop recreational development and leave it at that, I think that would be... I don't think anybody would raise the priority.
Somebody online just said, use words people can understand on the surveys.
Oh, yeah, this one.
Yeah? Yeah, and then when we, to figure out where the rankings are, we would just attribute a weight to each, like if a one is worth five points, uh, two second rankings worth four. And so then each, for each time that like if you ranked, say we have, um, tearing down the old water building. If we all, six of us filled out that is number one, that will give it thirty points. And so i- if each number has its own weight essentially, and we add up how many of each number was given to each item, it'll give, it'll give us the ranking. Any other, are there parts of it we're not thinking about? Any snags we might run into?
I think we oughta start in the next meeting and bring it up again and see what everybody's thoughts are. I mean, to figure out, you sit back and think about it.
And to start thinking about, um, what needs to be on it?
That make me feel a lot better, um, instead of spending the city's money, the, the people, they're spending their own money. And if it all goes south, it ain't on me, I mean, that's just, it's, it's on them. The way I look at it. Cause you know, you're gonna put money into it, it's just, what's gonna happen?
Peggy's got a question.
Oh, sorry Peggy.
That's okay. Do we have any idea what the cost would be to tear down the old plant?
Just an estimate of cost.
Do you have any idea?
Somewhere around twenty.
Okay.
I ain't got anything ready, and I could maybe get him to put something ready.
No, I would just want the ballpark.
Just tear apart the backside of the building here too, and see what he comes up with that. Just they're busy doing other things, so.
It'd be kinda nice if we had ballpark figures, that we kind of would know.
That's a very good thing.
What we're working there.
Yeah. Mark, thoughts, you seem to be doing something.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, well?
We've got change, so we're ready to go.
Yeah, I think we are, so if you brainstorming and
Yep.
Coming up with stuff, then we'll, we'll start to solidify it next meeting.
All right, did everybody get these copies?
Uh, mine was in my school's truck, they took it.
I lost mine.
Somebody out there is very well informed.
Yeah.
Put everything out in my glove box, wearing all my day.
Oh my god.
Well, the lot of these trucks I see, there could be a lot of stuff off the dash. So I guess really...
You have a copy, Mark. You have another copy of that?
I can make your copies for those.
Yeah, I need one, I'd love to.
You didn't bring yours?
My pad is...
He gave one to me, but I can get it back to somebody, cause I've already overruled.
What one do you guys have, cause I've got three at some seconds here.
I do too.
We all have the same.
Okay.
We have what you think of.
Okay. So on this, the proposed changes that we asked for, that's kinda where we're, where I am starting at, I guess, let's start there. It says 4H to like property proposed contract changes. And I don't know that we wanna go through these, um, I mean, on here, one, three, four, five, six, and seventeen and top two. But I don't know if there's, maybe there was a gap in conversation with it, I don't know on that. Cause there's a bunch of them that are missing, that's why I'm wanting to ask that question.
Before we get into it, on the, the comments page?
One, section one, yeah.
Um, on the exhibit A? Shouldn't it be from the driveway on south? Okay.
And that was, and then that goes back into the question of is the clubhouse, or the old clubhouse involved in it, because that would be north. And this, the, it says the clubhouse is also in that talk. But, so you gotta kinda, I don't know if you go from that cove? South, I mean, I don't know where you go from there, on what line you wanna draw there.
I remember there's everything south of the highway.
Where the road going out.
Okay. Well, on here, this is back from them, back from Cory, it's saying the hu- clubhouse is included.
And this, unfortunately, it's been a while.
Yes, that's why I wanna clarify.
I remember, and Mark helped me here, cause I know you were part of this conversation, but I remember a lot of the being up to, because when Cory was going over that draft with us and we weren't talking to you, and, and so it was kind of a, well, do they want the clubhouse or not, like what?
So...
Before we work out and answer, tell us what you're, where you guys stand at this point, nine months later.
And Crystal can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think yes on the clubhouse, because they need a place for the art exhibits. They also would like to have someplace that if they would decide to do a concession stand of any kind, whether it be ham and cheese sandwiches, we don't know, but a place that people could go in and do that. Um, so, yes.
Thoughts, anybody? Are we getting into the weeds on something we needed? Is there more higher level stuff we need to cover first, before we get?
No, I think, I mean, it's, it's all just figuring out where we're at, so we can make our notes and go back to ours, and you guys have your, what we're doing. I mean, this is just preliminary.
So I guess, before we get into stuff, just tell us where, since it's been so many months since we've all sat down and talked. Where are you guys now with it?
We are basically depending on what you guys want us to do. Uh, I think every club is still wanting to go ahead on their majority, but
Okay.
Um, I know that council meetings, it's been on it all through COVID, what are we doing, and it's been, we can't do anything cause of COVID, so. Um, and we told them last meeting that we were having these talks, so
Okay.
Everybody was still on board with, go forward.
Okay.
So as far as I, we are concerned, we are a go.
Okay.
So. Um, as far as where it was, we would, I mean, where they're wanting to put most of the building is where those two that are running north and south buildings are basically.
All part sheds?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, that falls back on this here, where the fifth year, if you guys wanna take the building back? If something goes wrong, that you can take the building down? So are you guys gonna put them buildings back up, that you take down?
Well, what's those buildings worth right now, I'm leaving my question on that one.
The two buildings they're talking about is virtually, need to come down anyway.
They're still buildings, I mean, we're just taking them down from that building, I mean...
At the end of another fifty years, how many, how much would those buildings be worth?
Well, what if it's two years?
So we're doing a fifty year lease?
Well, I don't know, but if something just goes wrong...
Wouldn't we be saying any of the cost of taking them down?
In fifty years, everything'd be great, people, everybody would be nothing there to take down. I'm just saying, until we get there, cause every year 4H's drilling down, I mean, there's very few kids in 4Hs, I mean, it seems like every year they just keep drilling down, what, in ten years, what it's gonna be, I don't know. I gotta look for the city's future here, cause that's the property of theirs.
Well, I get that, yeah. I don't, I, yeah, you tell, but you gotta give, what are those buildings worth right now today?
Well, then, nothing, what if you guys wanna do something to the clubhouse, and you say you wanna tear it down? And it's gone. Are you, you gonna put it back, or are we just gonna be left without a building? You know, I think we need, anything that's took down out there needs to be replaced, if you wanna, if you wanna take your building back down.
We probably need values on the buildings that are there that were taken down then, and if you're not comfortable with the clubhouse, I think we could work out some sort of arrangement that's separate from that, that maybe we can rent the clubhouse on occasion by occasion basis, but it's not part of our lease.
Too many things.
That might be...
Be more control, cause you could go out there, you guys get the deal, you could tear the clubhouse down, then we're just the S O L.
Right now, the clubhouse needs a new window, new back door in the basement.
Oh, no, I need to do a lot of work.
Yeah, I mean, it needs the raccoons to be tore out of it, I mean, still, I'm, what are those buildings worth? I mean, right now today, what we would value it for? I mean, at the time of the lease, what would those buildings be worth though? That's, that's the value that we would use. So in two years, fifty years, whatever it may be, that's the value that would have to be given back.
Well, I'm just thinking, there'll just be, when you tear the building down, the ground or everything you've done, what, what's left there is just gonna be left, and there's nothing, are you gonna put the, the materials back to where it was at? I'm just looking for the future. Cause you guys wanna take your building back down, if it goes south in two years, you wanna go back and tear your building down. And, I mean, they'll tear the building down, that's where it'll be left, it'll just be just there.
An open lot.
An open lot, yeah, if they don't cut poles off, poles still in the ground.
Well, can we put something in the contract to say how the, how the property was left?
We put it back to where it was.
So we need to build, build the building back.
Well, what are those buildings worth, I mean?
I, I would like to see, just to give the vote on the campground, I would like to see the city of Edina do the same thing for the 4H.
That'd be nice to do.
I mean, it's only fair to the cities of Edina.
We have to be careful though, like a lot of, you know, your concerns about the participation in 4H. And that, you know, the, the number, it's not under our purview as a city to, to, to dictate any part of that, or really have anything beyond a personal, individual opinion on it. Um, and so that, if, if this is something, I mean, maybe they're worried too about doing all participation and see this, you know, if they see this as an opportunity to maybe, hey, what we're doing isn't working, let's, let's try something different than I'm all for supporting them.
And the amount of money, even with COVID, that we've gotten to see go onto open shows, the financial burden is not necessarily there.
Can you explain that more?
The amount, even with COVID, I mean, people were coming from states everywhere to Marshall, to Scotland, to wherever they could get into a show. Because a lot of states weren't doing anything, so I mean, this is a, this would be your banner year for Missouri. Because we weren't blocking the shows, it was requiring masks, it was requiring that kinda stuff. That, I mean, these shows were raking in money, left and right, I mean, it's sad to say, but it was. So, the amount that they made, I know of it, two shows paid for the building twice. And that's just, I mean, that's the way the open shows works, and if we're gonna stay up to the top, we can't do open shows, cause it's not enough space. But if we go out there, we have enough space to do open shows, plus making money that way, plus with convenience of selling items, whatever it may be, Ham and Cheese, Sloppy Joe, hamburger, whatever. Um, that's another revenue for 4H. The other thing is, if we have the clubhouse, the art hall can be bigger, and we can open the door to a lot of things that I don't think kids in general, in Knox County, in Scotland County, wherever, think of 4H as you have to have an animal. There's so many things in 4H that I didn't know about, that I don't think anybody knows about, that we could do out to the city lakes, as far as photography. Whatever, I mean, damn, it's open.
Sport fishing, shooting sports, I mean, the possibilities are endless, with a place to go that's not at town, next to the courthouse.
So, as far as 4H is concerned, and that's why we're looking at the city property as a ticket for revenue and building the 4H back to where we want it to be in Knox County.
I'm sorry, how is their business model any business of yours? I mean, I'll just shut up now, I'm just saying, I mean, you're working into an agreement that is between the city and them, but as far as how they're gonna operate their operation, if you're, unless this council plans on writing into that contract that they're gonna micromanage how the 4H program does their business, really, the decision for you to make is to lease on the property or not. I mean, what happens after that, frankly, is none of your concern.
And that's, we, we have to be careful in restricting our discussion to what the discussion is about. Because we're, you know, that's part of why we've been going over so many drafts of the contract, to make sure we have, you know, we have liability insurance on it right now and, and, and that, but we're not entering into any sort of financial agreement, other than the nominal lease. We're not partners in any way, other than leasing the land. And that, so that is the question we're discussing, do we want to allow 4H extension to lease this area of property? And that's, that's what we're restricted to discussing.
I think that's what Rick was going with, as far as the buildings, I understand that, we need to come up with a an amount of what they're worth today, right now, or whatever kind the lease is done. And that's the financial, if we were taking our building back, that has come back to the city.
Or just something saying the ground left back the way it was, or anything that...
But that would imply to me that we have to put two buildings back up, not necessarily a one jerry.
Well, I think Rick was saying, in fifty years, imagine your, their fifty, the building wouldn't be, we don't...
Well, in fifty years, if it makes fifty years, that's great, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it, but you know, in three years, if they don't, don't have any money to do anything, they don't do nothing, and the law just sits out there, say they put a building up, two years, okay, they go up, okay. They go tear the building down, and there, you're left with the building, you're gonna have to go mow it, city's gonna have to take care of it.
The city's already taken care of it.
Yeah, we're already taking care of it.
They're already mowing it, trash is out there, and the cops are on their lap.
I see it as a better way, we're removing derelict buildings off the property at our expense. Yeah, cause we have enough, we're just talking about in town, we have enough derelict buildings that need our attention. If this is a way that, okay, worst case scenario, this doesn't work. You need to have your railings for you. You, they've improved our property
You have a flat.
For then, whatever we decide to do with it, you know, from a real estate, let's say worst case scenario, this doesn't work for them, we're back at this exact point in two or three years, and at that point, we make the decision to sell the property, they've improved our real estate value by taking down those buildings before we sell it. So it's, in, in that sense, just from a real estate, it's kind of a win-win for us.
They're too short to do anything with an implement, and they're leaking, like I said, to store anything valued in them.
Yeah, and the trusses are shot, so again, it's, it's not even like you could go in and sell them.
You know, at first, they wanted to try to use them maybe as, you know, each golf court, golf cart thing, maybe for the animals to be stored in. You know, at first, they wanted to try to use them maybe as, you know, each golf court, golf cart thing, maybe for the animals to be stored in, you know, during the show. They're not even hardly worth that. Cause I think that. The first cow that shoves up against one of them. It's gonna go with it. But, we can still come up with a value and that's, we put it in that at that time, here's where we're at.
I don't see a downside in any. Try it. Why? In all honesty, if the city of Edina as a whole had a mindset of. Let something be tried and if it goes, great. If it doesn't, okay, but we seem to have this mindset where. You know what? I would rather see my building fall down than so-and-so to have it. Or, you know, we have all this stuff sitting around that if people ten years ago even would have said. You know what? This building's too much for me. Hey, somebody take it, do something with it. If we don't have a plan for that ground, what? I don't wonder, you know, I don't see a. Huge issue, you know? Try to make something go.
I think that's where it tries. I mean, we can't. There's no way we can predict for you if this is gonna be a success or not.
Exactly.
All we can do is allow you to try something and, or, or not, but. I think we've got, as a community, we've gotta start trying. More, because nothing's gonna work if we don't try anything. And so, the more things we can try, we might hit on something that's a big success. Or, you know, and it's gonna take individuals and, and other organizations trying things. And our job as the city is to support our citizens in. Giving them the freedom to try, try things.
In all honesty, I started this no skin in the game period, except for wanting people to come to Edina. And. There's nothing touristy about Edina. The only thing we have is agriculture and the people. So, if we're not gonna bring it in with agriculture or something similar to that, what are we gonna bring it in with? Because they're not gonna be here for just the fun. So, that's why I started this, because Edina is going downhill. And I would like to get anything going. So we can, I mean, I've been all over across this nation and there are towns smaller than ours that have tons of shops. Coffee shops. They have tons of things selling. They have tons of little itty-bitty knick-knack shops. And they're making tons of money because they advertise that town. They work at that town. They have something to go to for that town. But. That's why I started this. I, I've never been to four H. Um, Poppy's at three. She's not even old enough for Clover Kids, so my wife thinks I'm crazy for even doing this. So. I, I'm willing to push it because it's something for Edina, but. That's why I've stayed on it for almost two years. To try to get this accomplished.
So what is?
You got a heart.
Yeah, and thank you for working on that.
You got some heart flaps, you got some heart flaps.
No matter how we feel about, about what we need to do.
Yes.
We all appreciate.
But some things got to break.
You working hard for Edina.
Yes.
Um. So what? Our discussion's starting going circles.
Yes.
Um.
The one, so, is this lease, cause ultimately, four H is here. And you's above it. Well, extension is above it. So they're asking for a list of the officers and directors, which is, so do you want four H or do you want extension?
That's up to you, who you want on the lease.
Okay.
The lease will be signed by extension.
Extension.
Those officers change every year.
Okay.
The four H council changes every year. Extension officers are voted on in March, and that's a public election that's printed in the paper. So, yeah, those dates don't, those months don't match up as far as extension.
Yeah, you can, we could change that instead of January and you could put it tomorrow.
Cause real quick, before we keep getting in the, in the immediate, I think, you know, the discussions we've had before. Whether we need to have the contract. The, a final, a contract both sides are happy with the wording of.
Yes.
Before we can have an official vote on whether we approve it or not.
Yes.
Right? So that's our goal tonight, is to get, not to decide whether.
We're doing.
This is going through or not, but to get a contract that both sides think is worded correctly. Right? Okay, I'd say April. Okay, so, with that in mind. Let's discuss.
I couldn't even get copies. And I did a copy second.
Sorry, we got sidetracked. Um, are you able to make a simple submit for copy?
I wasn't gonna check my record.
So, the, since the voting, it says January one on there. We just need to move that to March or April.
Right, yeah, okay.
On that. Then the second part of that is the financials.
So. Let me make notes before we jump on. So, into the voting, the voting is in January.
Voting, no, 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 voting is in.
It's late April, it's late February, early March. I think April's a safe, a safe time to report new officers to you.
So, April one, April two, go, April two, because April's the state month. We give you the board members of who is now, what and where.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the next one is asking for the financials. The financials for. The extension council. Are already out in the open and they are certified and audited already.
And their public record, right?
Yes, so, do we need that in there?
And the extension financials is not gonna support this.
Yeah, I think that one's up to four H.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's not really the extension's financials.
Yeah, I'm, I'm an executive officer on the extension council right now and I can tell you right now, the extension is not paying for this.
Yeah, no, it's four H is paying for it.
Extension council is not putting.
Financials they want is what's.
Who's paying?
But if.
The four H cannot go into a contract.
But if extension is the name on the lease. I, I don't think we have a right to ask for four H's. Why is it necessary to get the financials at all? Again, as long as we pay our fifty dollar lease, why does it matter how much money we have or don't have?
Uh, because Cory Boone said we need to.
Yeah, that's. I would, yeah, I would like.
Cause you've got zero, you're not gonna have no finance to do anything. Law will sit there.
I think if it's.
Wish I could rent it around for a dollar. If it's left sit there, a year, you're great.
I mean, nobody's giving you a dollar a year nap for it and it's just sitting there.
Well, we got an option we could sell if we had to. We tie a fifty year, no, no, that's, it's tied up for fifty years. We can't do nothing.
Arguably, maybe though. If we decided to do it, it would be about. The children of the community. I mean, that's the difference between you leasing land or me leasing land. Yeah, it'd be a heck of a deal if I could find something to lease for fifty dollars for, or a dollar a year. But the only person I'm serving by doing that is me. So no one really has any motivation to lease me land for. For a nominal fee, but. That, um, we're not doing it for the money if we did this. We're doing it for the community good. And use, that's the use of our community.
And if nothing happens there, it's. What do you, what, I mean, that's what I'm saying. We're not getting a lot. We don't have nothing.
So we had talked about doing. At one point, a clause in there that if. There's no development in a five year, like, not just within five years, but at any point in a five year span. Is that? Something you guys would be open to? Cause, you know, Rick's, Rick's got a point. If we're stuck and our grandkids are the ones having to deal with. This completely tied up land. Like I get, you know, he has, he has a fair point. What?
Yeah.
What are your ideas?
You could put a five years, if we don't have a building up and doing things out there in five years, it goes back.
And then if at any point, you know, say it's, you know, this goes gung ho for twenty years. And then, the leadership at that point, and you know, it, it goes on, if, if for five years, it's. Not, or if at any point, you want to turn it back over to the city.
Yep.
That's where I go in there, where you get a dollar a year and still paying a fifty dollar to tie it all up. Every year, you have to pay your dollar and then you can get out anytime you want. They pay fifty dollar, you're stuck for fifty years.
But I think the dollar a year is definitely.
Well, that dollar a year was from you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what.
And that was, we didn't come up with that.
That's just a leak, yeah, that's what we came up with. But I'm just saying, if you pay.
Someone had said, let's just pay the fifty and we're like, no, we want the dollar a year.
Yeah, or you get both ways you can get.
I know, but you're talking about a dollar and we didn't come up with that.
No, I'm not.
His, his one is just to get it tied up for fifty years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everybody's in agreement there.
It's a five year.
Five year without any. Action basically, yeah, and so.
Or any development or.
Yeah, it's renewable annually up to fifty years.
Yeah.
And, but yeah, either side, each year, either side can say.
Not eat, no, cause we can't, we can't put that much money into the property and then every, next year they'd be like, no, we want it back.
It only need, it needs to be if we haven't done anything for five years, or we're not doing anything, then you have the option to terminate. So, the, going back real fast, and we didn't finish up about the, um, financial disclosures. That's gonna just be a Cory question.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to know the reason behind it. I mean, we can give you the four H councils and I mean, that, like I said, the extensions is public knowledge, but the extension. Uh, office wouldn't be funding this, like, never at all. Okay.
Six goes back to maintenance, but that, it goes into what you guys were talking about earlier, your campground, so we'll have to. Take out the campgrounds for now, until we have, you guys have a decision and then we'll figure that out. But that still goes back to. Where is our line? On service and maintenance. Of the mowing, the weeding, the keeping of, um. That's something, that hinges on that also.
I have a question. If we, if we don't take the clubhouse as part of the lease, are you guys going to. Make the necessary updates to the clubhouse to make it where it is rentable for our events? Or will it just sit and just repair and we'll, we'll do our own building for our hall?
I think it'd be a good investment itself.
For us to make the event.
Yeah, I've had so many people ask me to rent that place that it's not even funny.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that because we don't need it a lot during the year. I mean, we could definitely rent it a few times a year. And if we could come to an agreement where every year we rented the art hole for the week of fair and it would cost us this much money. Like we have for years with the Ann and Hearst building, you know, every year we knew for the last ten years that it was gonna be three hundred dollars a year to rent it for that week, you know?
So what if, while Cory's working on the next draft of the contract and we're working on a priority survey for the community. I think that would be a great thing to add to. Um, getting the clubhouse back up in to have a rentable venue.
Have a place.
And if it's something that. The community strongly wants to have open, to be freely rented, you know, it looks like it would be a priority for us. And if not, like, we use that to make our decision, see what the people want on that. Cause I think you're right. I think, you know, idea or for conference rooms, there's.
Well, we used to have Christmas, city Christmases out there. We used to, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think they're, yeah, it could.
Those reunions were out there.
Yeah.
So, and we can't keep it as busy as you guys can. As long as we had like a standing agreement that every year, you know, the week of fair and we don't deviate, this is the first year that we've deviated from that week that we've always had it in like five years, so.
Everything's deviated this year.
Right.
Okay, okay, so yeah, you, we'll look into that and, and come back. So if, let's assume. Let, let me make notes. If on my mind, I'm gonna jump track. Let's assume clubhouse is not.
Yep.
For the sake of discussion.
Then we would go south of the yard.
What's the problem? And when we say driveway south, is that from the north side of the driveway? Or like where? Who would need access to the driveway?
Then who's gonna maintain the driveway? It'll fall down, how much highway you want.
Right, that's gotta be. So we would have access to it, but we wouldn't maintain it. It wouldn't be our property.
If you go to the south, south of the highway, we'd have to take care of it. If you go to the north, you guys have to take care of it. It's up to what you have in mind.
So if we, if it's south of the driveway and you take care of it, do we still get to use the driveway to enter?
No, you guys are south.
Yes, we just have.
Yeah, you guys on the south side.
Parking lot and all, that'd be all free.
Right. So yeah, I would say that's preferable that you guys maintain that.
Which would go into the other one. There are or have been some vendors that want to do, like, open shows and stuff like that. Technically, they'll be on here as probably, on the throwing driveway.
Okay.
So they would probably come to pay you. Not us. If that's a fee that you're gonna put in, I mean, that's just.
Right. Or. You lease.
What are you guys doing on the south side out front? Can't you make this on?
Oh yeah, we could.
Like your.
Most of them are saying that they wanna bring in like, um, their trailer, so it's gotta be on a flat, hard surface area. So we could scrape it all, you know, get it, the gravel, but go from there. And that's fine.
That'd actually be a big deal with the.
No.
Or. If they're leasing, would it work? If we are looking at leasing the clubhouse, say we retain the clubhouse and the drive, what if, could we just lease you the clubhouse and the parking lot, like. Do you lease that whole? Section for the fair week?
You'd have to do that anyway, put a park in and everything.
Yeah, and then.
Yeah, you're gonna be.
Then you still get.
Whoever leases, it's gonna have to have it.
Yeah.
So I'd take.
Would there be a different fee whether we was using the clubhouse or just the parking lot? Cause like, we use the clubhouse for fair week, but if it was an open show, we probably wouldn't need the clubhouse. We just want the parking lot. I would think so. Cause if we, if we retain the clubhouse, there's a, there would be a fee that.
When you guys are out there, there ain't gonna be no A S S out there anyway. And then you're gonna take care of all of it anyway.
Oh yeah.
There ain't nobody else that gonna be there.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I. Yeah, I think. Yeah, we can definitely work that out.
All right, so. I was gonna write the top of the road so I can remember. So, cause that kind of leads into. If the four H or, the four H really. It said that in there states that we agree to have exclusive rights to staging events for four H, such as annual eye fair and related shifts. We would like to, but this may be something you guys wanna do, but not limited to. Doing like a car show or a fishing tournament or anything like that. Is that okay?
That's your ground. I mean, you're ready to do whatever.
Yeah, the city, the city likes public property. I understand, yeah.
And so you've got your entry booth set up, yeah.
Yeah, that's your ground. You can do what you want.
Okay. All right. Um, one of, number fifteen was talking about the payment of officers. We don't pay officers to do anything. The only thing we pay is mowing. And I, I understand that he probably put that in, cause that's what.
Right.
Most clubs or whatever. Most clubs or whatever he's doing.
Very much a boilerplate language, but, yeah, okay.
Um. That one we already took care of. And I think that section eighteen, the termination. That kinda goes into what you had to tell that wording would go for your five year. So. The charter and the bylaws, once again, would be four H, but the leasier that's signing it is gonna be the extension.
Yeah, and those aren't local, those are University of Missouri's charter and bylaws.
Um, when you start doing open shows, does that go to the four H's or does it go to? Extension.
Goes to fair board. Which, four, fair board is just a subcommittee of four H council, four H council is a program of extension.
Cause I know their son's just four H only, I mean, they don't have nothing, just four H only, yeah.
Yeah, that's a closed show.
Yeah.
So with fair board control on that show, they will collect the proceeds.
So down the road, if you ever won, it wouldn't be a big deal, switch to four H.
No.
Four H can't enter into a lease, we can't legally enter into a contract, that is the only reason why we have to put University of Missouri extension. Because they are a program of extension.
The state bylaws kick out anything that we would sign as four H.
Okay. So that's gonna be a Cory question that'll have the same answer as the financial disclosures and.
Yes.
Um, okay.
Cause technically, everything's gonna be four H, just the signature is going to be.
Yeah.
Extension. Cause, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I think that is the majority.
Any other, I have questions or thoughts? Do we want to? Um. How about a meeting set with Cory as soon as he's able and get him started and hopefully he can have the next draft, we'll just put. This into old business at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll all have a new draft for review at that point.
Yeah.
We have a four H council meeting on October thirteenth, if we had a draft by that night, that would be great.
I think that's the second Tuesday, so they might want to get a calendar. Oh, so that would be.
Second Tuesday.
Yeah, so our meeting will be on the night before.
Is probably the twelfth, but that's also Columbus Day, which is.
Okay, well. So we normally move it.
I mean, we'd move it to the next night, or we, you know, we could have it on the holiday.
Well, then we can do like, move ours up.
Oh, yeah, we could do something in a special meeting if we need to.
Okay.
Or we could even do. Six o'clock and then come over here for seven o'clock.
Okay, that's, I mean, you guys.
Why don't you let us know like a week before roughly when you think you'll have something and then we can, we can schedule.
That's something we need to discuss anyway about our meeting, not about October meetings.
We, yeah, we'll need to do that at, at the end, um, yeah, cause we can't. My first thought was to postpone our meeting past years, but for paying the bills, we can't go, right, that far, so. Okay.
That's one of the later, the layers of our meeting anyway.
All right, well, let's see how fast Cory can get you a new draft and go from there. And. Any other? Question with these notes I'm taking to Cory, any other? Right. Well, thanks guys, I really appreciate your time.
All right.
Thanks for waiting around on me.
Yeah, my seventy-three year old dad is at the house with my four and five year olds, he's, he's gonna kill me.
Lindsay told me we were taking a picture. Thank you guys.
I bet you didn't.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay. So while it's fresh in our minds, let's set a date for our next meeting. That.
So.
Tuesday would be the thirteen.
Yeah, since Monday is a holiday, it would probably be preferable to do it Tuesday.
Motion for that to move it, or is that?
Consensus if, I mean, if somebody, if some of you are busy, you already know that you can't come the thirteenth. You know, it's a long one to work. Like.
Don't have that Tuesday after Columbus Day barbecue that happened here or anything. Okay.
So is it Tuesday?
Thirteen, five minutes.
Okay.
Playing with me, I have nothing, got nothing, so.
All right, so.
No, never mind, I.
Oh, yeah.
Always does.
Yep, get old texts.
I would. It's not, David, what comes next?
No, I'm good.
You're asking, you know what comes next?
Yeah, you do.
Anybody drive around, see if they got everything mowed or anything yet?
Yeah, just a reminder.
Streets on Main Street would be good, clean that up, get that grass out of streets, dog walks.
Yep, gee, um, Monday morning. Every Monday morning, Margaret, Joe and I are having meetings to try to streamline workflow. Have a little better communication and accountability, so keep an eye on your wards, listen to your people. Send concerns that if you don't wanna talk to Joe directly or to Margaret, or if, you know, just. Send them to us and we can talk about it at the weekly meeting and get it planned for when it's gonna happen.
Are they supposed to get the rest of the streets all chipped and sealed?
They're hoping to, or they're planning on it, they're getting more sealant, uh, to be sure. Be able to seal everything they've gotten done this summer.
But I think the rest of the streets, they ain't got done.
Yeah, so they focused, they still have a few spots in the first ward, cause the three year plan is to do. Focus on first ward this year, second ward next year, third ward.
Uh, the other way around.
Yeah, no, yeah, sorry.
This year, the west side, yeah.
Looking at the wrong people and the wrong numbers, um, so for the dyslexic people, they understood perfectly what I was saying. Um, but they did, we've just got so many rough spots, they did get some stuff done in the second ward ahead of schedule. This year, but they still have some in the first to get, um, or the third. You know, I switched it again, sorry, it's been a long, long meeting, guys, um. So now it's still trying to finish up some of the major trouble spots and. Kinda like playing whack-a-mole a little bit when you've got a three year plan, but trying to get the worst spots. In the first year, but.
You only got so much money to mess with.
Yep, and.
Next year will be better.
Yep, yeah. We're, we're a long way ahead of where we were.
Yeah.
At the beginning of this year and better than we were, you know, two years ago, and as long as we can keep. Keep making progress. But yes, keep an eye. On your people, your towns, your streets, um, and let us know what, what needs to be addressed and we'll all work together to.
And it's your own part of that, they need to hire somebody part-time to strictly just mow.
Mow, and we need.
And keep everything looking nice at parks, the ballpark down there.
Yeah, that's a discussion we have had, it would be a wise investment. I agree.
Yeah, we need to work on the parks, Dave. Well, the player and stuff's got the chips and stuff we need, get all that stuff replaced.
Defensive part down there's gonna fall over, cause all the concrete's, you know, it's always sitting on top.
Well, and I talked to Joe too about, you know, a lot of this stuff, like at the parks, do it, doing the, the, um. Taking out the old ties and putting in the new edging and the, the pea gravel, cause you guys, we've got a lot of supplies, we need the rocks. We can find volunteers, we can find whether it's a four H club or Groanox County or, uh, NHS students. Or church groups, I mean, there's, there, there are groups that look for service projects and sometimes ironically, they're kinda hard to find. So, you know, there's, I, I told them, be thinking of things that it doesn't have to be you guys to do and.
Your plan, you're done.
Yeah, so. All right, any other comments?
We can wish we adjourned.
Did that work?
All right. All on paper, yeah, all posed, okay, that's what I was joking about, Dave, isn't it?
Done yet?
No, and it was, that stuff was good, so thank you.